Recording in progress.
Thank you, and welcome to the April 10th, 2025 Louisville Planning Commission meeting. With a roll call, please.
Commissioner Mahaly.
Present.
Commissioner Bangs.
Present.
Commissioner Troy.
Here.
Commissioner Hunt.
Here.
Commissioner Basket.
Here.
Commissioner Moline.
Here.
Chair Brown Eyes.
Here. Thank you. With that, a motion to approve this evening's agenda, please.
So moved.
Move second.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Hearing no dissension. And we're looking at approval of minutes. We'll just do them each individually. Does anybody have any changes or corrections to the February 13th meeting minutes? Seeing none, a motion to approve those minutes, February 13th. And a second.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. The February 27th minutes, any changes or corrections?
No.
Seeing none, motion to approve.
Moved. Second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Noting that I'm an abstention on that one.
And I as well, I'm abstention, thank you.
All right, thank you. And then March 13th, meeting minutes, any corrections? Seeing none, motion to approve.
So moved.
And a second.
A second.
Thank you, all in favor.
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
And I'm abstaining on that one.
And Commissioner Troy is abstaining on the March 13th. All right, now we open it up for public comment for items that are not on this evening's agenda. If anybody's here to speak on something that's not on the agenda, then can somebody check the online universe? Seeing none, all right. We will then move into our first item of new business. I will now open the public hearing on the request for a planned unit development at 517 South Arthur Avenue. The purpose of the hearing is to receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. Procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there will be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. Next, we will have a presentation testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the planning commission to the applicant. After these two presentations, members of the public who join the meeting in person, by computer, or telephone may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak in person is asked to complete a speaker card. Use the raise hand function of participating by computer or star nine. If calling in by telephone, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Two people present at the meeting may pool their minutes to allow one person to speak for up to a total of six minutes. The purpose of public comment is to receive public hearing testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant and staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing and no further testimony or evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions tabled, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. Does anyone participating have any objections to this procedure? Seeing none, I welcome you to present.
Great, thank you. Notice has been satisfied as well.
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Do we have any disclosures? No. Great, thank you.
Great. Good evening, Matt Post, Senior Planner. The item before you tonight is Resolution Number 4, Series 2025, recommending approval of a planned unit development amendment to allow the construction of a 16,294-square-foot industrial flex building with associated site improvements at 517 South Arthur Avenue. So we'll begin with some background here. The site is currently vacant. You can see the aerial highlighted on the slide. There are existing industrial developments north and south of this site. The Burlington Northern Santa Fe Rail Line right-of-way to the west of this site. Obviously, the east of the site is the South Arthur Avenue right-of-way. It is located in the CTC or the Colorado Technology Center. The site is .86 acres in size, or just over 36,000 square feet. One of the smaller or smallest lots in the CTC, just based on overall size. This property was originally platted as part of the CTC or Colorado Technological Center filing 1 subdivision in 1979. Little typo there on the screen, I apologize. Moving into the proposal, this slide depicts an image of the site plan presented for review tonight, which includes landscaping. You can see the building, as proposed, favors the north side of the site. This is to accommodate an access point on the south side, but also because that access point is concurrent with an existing 30-foot sewer easement that's on the south side of that site that runs east to west from CTC, across underneath the rail line and to the St. Louis Parish Boulder Innovation Campus. It's just on the other side of the rail line. So the entire south side of that site is encumbered by a 30-foot sewer easement. The proposal includes a 16,290-square-foot industrial flex building. Again, that industrial flex, or that industrial flex, rather, is a warehouse space with ancillary and supporting office uses. The applicant has indicated that roughly 14,700 square feet of that space will be utilized as warehouse area, while the remaining roughly 1,600 square feet would be utilized for office and support. As I believe the commission is aware detention and water quality is required on every site in the CTC regardless of size. So this site at .86 acres still has to provide detention and water quality. That's a standard engineering practice of ours. That detention and water quality area is located on the east side of the site, between the building and South Arthur Avenue. There's an existing detached walk here. You can see the applicant's proposing an internal walk directly adjacent on the south side of the building with a plaza space at the entrance pursuant to Industrial Design Guidelines. And that walk connects to the existing detached sidewalk on South Arthur Avenue. South side of the site occupied by parking, vehicle access and circulation, and a fire turnaround lane. You can see that fire hammerhead turnaround depicted in the central portion of the parking lot there. That's also how you access a recessed service area that's on the south side of the building. The main entrance is that southeast corner of the building. Again, you can see that impervious surface, which is reflective of the required plaza space. That entry is designed with a storefront system. We'll see some elevations that depict the architectural detail on that a little bit later on in the slides. As part of this development proposal, the applicant's requesting a number of waivers. We'll get into those waivers in detail. But 14 parking spaces are proposed pursuant to the Industrial Design Guidelines. With the proposed use of office and warehouse, this use would require 23 parking spaces on site. Again, the applicant is proposing 14, and they are making a formal parking reduction request. We'll get into that in more detail. But the applicant is confident that based on their experience with similar uses and developments along the front range, that the parking that they've provided and proposed is sufficient to serve the use. We'll get into that in more detail. Moving on to the architecture and design, the building will be constructed of a concrete tilt-up product or concrete tilt-up wall panels, which will be designed with varied patterns, form liners, and accent colors, including additional articulation. The primary storefront system, you can see the top elevation on the slide on the screen would be the South Arthur Avenue elevation or the primary street-facing elevation that's here. The middle elevation is the south elevation, and the lower elevation is the north elevation. And provide the west elevation is directly adjacent to the BNSF railway, but it's generally just a reflection of the concrete tilt-up product here. The elevations include variations in parapet height and articulation in the building facade, which when combined with the variation of materials, generate the design required by the Industrial Design Guidelines. Applicant provided a rendering of the building. This would be that main storefront-style entry system from an architectural perspective. And again, this would be the view from South Arthur Avenue. You see the plaza space depicted there. If you take a closer look at the site plan, there's some seating requirements associated with the plaza space along with additional landscaping requirements that are reflected on the actual site plan. So just hopping in or furthering the proposal, here approximately 24% of the site is landscaped. It's just below the 25% that's required by the Industrial Design Guidelines. Additionally, 22 trees are proposed here. The Design Guidelines would technically require 24 trees on this site. Those are wrapped up in some of the waiver requests. So there's a waiver for both landscape coverage and tree requirements. Again, we'll cover that in additional detail. 22 trees on site, but the applicant is also proposing 136 low-water shrubs, perennials, and ornamental grasses. And there is no turf proposed as part of this proposal. So from a quick analysis perspective here, the proposed use of the space is again a warehouse with that ancillary office use. The warehouse is a use-by-right in the CTC. A use that would be a fully office use is actually a special review use in the CTC. However, I think common practice has been when the majority of the space is utilized for a by-right use, we obviously understand that an ancillary piece of that would be an office or support system. So again, just a use-by-right here with a warehouse flex space as the applicant has indicated. There's a detailed analysis in the staff packet and staff report as to how this proposal conforms to the Industrial Design Guidelines. And we've found it to generally conform to those standards with the waivers as proposed tonight. And so we'll hop into the reduction and waiver requests. So again, the applicant's requesting a parking reduction with this application. As stated, 23 spaces would be required with, per our Industrial Design Guidelines, to park this particular space. The applicant has requested a reduction to 13 spaces, or actually 14 spaces, I'm sorry, including the ADA space, the required handicap space that's there. So it'd be 14 total spaces with the ADA space. The primary justification for the request is the minimal amount of office or support space proposed with this particular development, combined with the low employee density and limited visitor traffic that are typically associated with the proposed warehouse use. The facility is designed to be light industrial in operation with a small administrative component, based on the applicant's justification and their experience developing similar uses along the front range, and our observation of similar uses in the CTC, specifically north and south of this site that we know to be generally overparked. Staff support the request for the parking reduction for this development. In addition to the parking reduction request, there are seven total waivers that are attached to this particular PUD. We'll start with the first waiver, which I think is a common one. We see a request for a reduction in overall parking space size. As you all are aware, the Industrial Design Guidelines require such individual vehicle spaces of nine feet by 19 feet. The applicant's requesting eight foot six by 17 foot six. Staff has generally supported this waiver consistently throughout the industrial areas. The nine by 19 is again a bit outdated. We see that the eight-six, 17-six space size is generally sufficient. That also allows for a one-and-a-half-foot bumper overhang at the sidewalk. You can see we have parking spaces that are directly adjacent and perpendicular to the walk that's associated with this particular site. The sidewalk is actually six-and-a-half feet wide, which allows for a one-and-a-half-foot bumper overhang and then an unobstructed five-foot pedestrian path. So this has been a pretty common practice that we've applied so far or on recent developments in the industrial district. Second waiver request, again, I think commission has seen this before. This is for the two-way drive aisle width. Our Industrial Design Standards require a minimum of 28 feet for a two-way drive aisle. The applicant is requesting 24 feet. The Louisville Fire Protection District has signed off on this particular application, including the hammerhead access into the central part of the site, indicating that the 24-foot drive aisle width is sufficient to serve the use. Staff feel similarly and support the request for the reduction in drive aisle width here. The third waiver request is for a driveway separation. There is a provision within the Industrial Design Guidelines that state that private driveways to individual sites shall be separated by 75 feet, a minimum of 75 feet. Obviously, if you refer back to the aerial, these are relatively small sites along the west side of CTC. The south side and the north side are already developed, so the applicant would have to, or is limited, rather, by the existing driveways. So a 42-foot spacing centerline to centerline is proposed from the access point on the south side of this lot to the access point of the lot just south of this. Public Works staff reviewed this and identified no operational or safety concerns. And so staff support the request based on the site constraints and the existing development patterns both north and south of this particular site. The, moving on with additional waivers, the fourth waiver request is to the required 10-foot-wide landscape buffer between properties in the industrial zone district adjacent to similar in the same zoning. So on the south side of the site, the applicant is proposing a reduction in the 10-foot buffer to two feet two-and-a-half inches and seven feet six inches or seven-and-a-half. That two-foot, two-and-a-half is at the very southwestern corner of the site where the access drive hammers out. That seven-and-a-half is the south side. Your staff packet actually indicates a four-foot-wide buffer and a nine-and-a-half-foot-wide buffer. That was put together after we got additional information regarding fire department access. And so that is reduced now to two feet two-and-a-half inches and seven feet six inches. That's reflected in the PUD application materials that were provided in the staff packet tonight. So the applicant's requesting this waiver due to site-specific constraints and the fact that, again, the easement exists and the site is relatively small and the property has an odd configuration. The purpose of the 10-foot buffer in the Industrial Design Guidelines is to buffer the same uses. It's an interesting provision. We've talked about it before. In an attempt to mitigate the impacts, the applicant has provided a dense row of mid-height shrubs in this location that when at mature height will be five to six feet tall. Staff have determined that based on the applicant's willingness to plant that area with dense shrubs and then also the same use that's directly adjacent to it, in conjunction with the site constraints of this particular property, we do support the request for a reduced buffer on the south side only. The buffer still applies to the west side and the north side, and trees are included in that buffer area as well. On the west side, where we have the two-foot, two-and-a-half-inch reduction, obviously you have a 100-foot BNSF right-of-way right there. And then just beyond that is the St. Louis Parish Boulder Innovation Development that's currently underway right now. So staff are positive that there will not be a significant negative impact on the adjacent properties based on, just again, similar uses to the south and then what amounts to a buffer on the west side of that site. The fifth waiver request is for a reduction in the rear setback to the property. That would be the west-side setback here. Industrial Design Standards require a 15-foot setback, a 15-foot rear setback. You can see just based on the oblique view, or rather, the odd configuration here that the west side of the lot is not totally square. It creates a pinch point at that rear lot line where it converges with the building footprint. And as a result, maintaining a consistent 15-foot setback all the way down, given the size of the site and the requirement for detention with the easement that's on the south side, it makes it difficult for the applicant to include that or to meet that setback requirement. To be clear, through the review process, the applicant actually presented a significantly more, a more significant encroachment than what we've agreed upon here. So they've, there's, they've agreed to a small portion, a one-foot, six-inch encroachment that's just on the south side of the building. There's actually an image in your staff report that kind of highlights where that is. It's difficult to see on the screen here right now, but you can see it highlighted in green. That's the extent of the encroachment of the building into the rear setback on the west side of the site. That's also in line with the 10% deviation allowance that would typically be permitted under administrative waiver processes. So again, based on the lot size, configuration of the lot, easement, detention requirements, and the fact that, again, that BNSF railway is to the west side, staff feel that this is a minimal encroachment and that negative impacts of the adjacent property are minimized because of that. So we support the reduction in rear setback. And again, the applicant worked with us to reduce that encroachment as well through the review process. The sixth and seventh waivers are for landscape coverage and trees. So as mentioned, the Industrial Design Guidelines require that 25% of the overall site is landscaped. The applicant is proposing 24%. So just 1% under that requirement. Additionally, 24 trees would technically be required here. The applicant is proposing 22 trees. And as we've mentioned, the request arises from the physical constraints of the site and the applicant's desire to reasonably develop and market the use similar to other uses in the CTC. Despite the reduction in the landscape area, we feel that the applicant has prioritized high-quality landscape design throughout the site, which again includes 22 trees on a site that's less than one acre in size, 136 low-water shrubs, as we mentioned, no turf, and then also satisfying the requirements for onsite detention and water quality. So as you know, staff reviewed this for compliance with the Louisville Municipal Code, specifically PUD review criteria found in Section 1728-120. We also reviewed it for conformance to the Industrial Design Guidelines. And with the waivers, as they've been proposed, this and the parking reduction request pursuant to the Louisville Municipal Code, this request does meet the standards of both of those codes. And that would conclude staff's presentation. And our recommendation is approval of Resolution 4, Series 2025, recommending approval of a PUD amendment to allow the construction of a 16,294-square-foot industrial flex building and associated site improvements. So with that happy answer, any questions? Does the applicant have a presentation?
Thank you very much. We will open it up for Commissioner questions for Mr. Post. We'll check online there. Jeff, Commissioner Moline, can we unmute him, please?
Thank you, Chair Brown Eyes. Just a couple of quick questions, Mr. Post. Thanks very much, Planner Post. I guess one of my questions is, when reviewing the number of parking spaces, is there thought, through the review process, is there thought to subsequent businesses, let's say, after this business would leave and we'd have this building in sight, is there a concern that we've left it underparked, so to speak, I guess? And how does, how does the staff review that?
I would say that's a valid concern. That wasn't necessarily part of our review, only because we considered the entitlement directly related to the warehouse use. I would say that any new use that came in and/or a PUD amendment, staff would have to take a close look at any review for a new use that would be there to ensure that it meets our parking standards, which is a typical practice for us anyways.
Well, I think particularly important in this case where there's no on-street parking allowed.
Right.
Has the potential to be, but we also know that there's a rich history of overparking.
Yeah.
I would just note, if it's okay, Commissioner Brown Eyes, that, so the city, technically, you can park on the streets in the CTC. However, the Owners Association, I believe there's covenant agreements that state no parking on the street. So regardless of that, though, to your point, they cannot satisfy off-street spaces with on-street parking. So, yeah.
Thanks.
Okay.
So I had a question related to yours to clarify. And so if a future business comes in and they renovate the interior and change the ratio of warehouse to office space, does that trigger another PUD amendment? Or is that within the current zoning?
That would, the staff would have to be diligent in reviewing that because if they change the amount of office space, that would change the allowed entitlements. Because as I had mentioned, office is technically only permitted in the CTC as a special review use. And so if the amount of office space in that, in that building is changing, then we should, as a staff, be taking a closer look at that to determine whether or not a PUD amendment and special review use are then required to ensure there's no negative impacts.
Yeah, because I have the same concern as Commissioner Moline, you know, specifically for the case I mentioned, where some future owner of the building decides to renovate. And our assumptions on the ratio of actual, you know, office users to warehouse changes. And then, you know, suddenly we've adopted a parking issue.
Right.
Thank you. Commissioner Moline?
Okay, yeah, thanks. Just one more question, Planner Post, and that is, I guess, and it's sort of related to the parking issue too, is just through the review process, it sounded like there was, you know, a little back and forth and stuff between staff and the applicant. And I'm just wondering, you know, a number of the waivers could probably be resolved with a smaller building on the site. And I'm just wondering how, and maybe this is a question for the applicant too, but I'm just curious, from a staff perspective, how that went or how that part of the review went.
Yeah, I would encourage you to ask the applicant that question as well.
Okay.
That was, that was part of the original review process. The building size has actually been reduced from what was originally presented to us, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thanks, that's it for me. Thank you very much.
And this may also be a question for the applicant. How do you do detention without turf?
Well, we could, we could take a look at the plans there. There may be low, probably low-water seating in there. So I should clarify my, when I use the term turf, I think I'm referring to the more traditional sense of, like, yeah, exactly. Yeah, so I apologize for being ambiguous on that.
Great, thanks. Any additional questions? Commissioner Basket, did you have any? You can just shake your head no, okay, great, thank you. All right, seeing no additional questions, can we invite the applicant up?
Hello, my name is Caleb Seale. I'm a project coordinator with the Beck Group, leading the design and construction of the building that's being assessed today. Yeah.
Thank you. No formal presentation, right?
We do not have a formal presentation.
Great, thanks. So we'll just open it up for questions of the applicant.
I guess so, yeah, can I ask?
Yeah, please.
I'll ask, what was the original requested size prior to this being reduced to under 16-some-thousand square feet?
Originally, it was closer to, I think, 19,000. So the reduction has reflected about a 3,000, 4,000, like, square-foot reduction. The owner wanted to make sure that they were maximizing, you know, that balance between warehouse and office. And so we understood that it would be a very tight and delicate balance, trying to make sure we kind of adhere to their wishes, but also be, you know, reflective of what's required. So that's where we've kind of ended up today, is at this particular size. But, you know, based on the feedback, based on what your thoughts are, you know, we can easily reopen that discussion about maneuvering the size.
Okay, thanks.
I have a follow-up on that. Commissioner Troy, yes, please.
So just to confirm, there's nothing programmatically specific that is driving the 16,294-square-foot number?
Correct. As of right now, there isn't a specific tenant that has been identified. But the owner, who has a long history in working with warehouses and industrial properties, does understand or has a pretty good perspective of the ratio needed. So that's what we kind of used as a baseline in kind of configuring. of used as a baseline in kind of configuring that warehouse portion versus the office. So as of right now, there's not a specific driver of that. But again, that could massage based on the identification of a tenant.
This is a question kind of joint for the applicant and staff as well. Was there an evaluation during the development process that identified what thresholds were, what thresholds corresponded to where additional variances came into play? For example, I, I think you talked about the west side, the 15-foot setback. It's only 13 feet at the bottom, maybe 10, 20 feet of the, of the building, right on the southwest side of the building. Just knowing that there wasn't a, a specific programmatic definition around the 16,294 square feet of built space, was there a threshold that, that was identified during there that would have said, you know, one more square foot means now we have to ask for these other variances or, you know?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say that we identified a threshold. I, I would say that we discussed addressing some of the waivers that were requested and ways in which to do that, you know, a, 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 a minor reduction in building size. Well, I don't know that it would be called a minor reduction. I don't want to speak for the applicant. But a reduction in building size would likely allow for two or three of the waivers to drop off here, right? However, you know, I think part of the, part of the consideration the staff took into this was again, the overall size constraint of, of the site in and of itself and recognizing that in order for uses of this nature to be viable, there's a certain, there's a certain space type that's necessary. We also have additional, I, I, I guess I'll just add that if, if the building size reduced without actually having anything to review, there may be a scenario where we would actually have additional waivers that would pop up. For example, our parking areas have the same setbacks as buildings. So even if this building were to decrease significantly in size, the same site constraints are, are present or, or some of the same site constraints are, are present. I think, so, so that was, so to answer your question, Commissioner, that, that did, that did factor into our decision. And how, how much can this building be reduced? How much parking can actually be added here at this point? And then does that significantly impact the request for waivers that would be coming before you all tonight? So.
Sure. And, and I understand that's an iterative process, right? And I, I think based on the ratios that are required with the 1,600 square feet of office and 14.7 of warehouse, that's, you know, 21.3 parking spaces, right? We round that up to 22. But, but it just, it does beg the question, right? If the overall programming was reduced by 300 square feet and then you're knocking that off and taking advantage of the site, does that also knock off the, the parking count, you know, when you do those things? But understood that, that there wasn't that iterative evaluation by staff. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have a question for you. So this drop in the landscape coverage from, was it 24 to 23%?
25.
25 to 24. Roughly, how many square feet is that?
Of the, just of landscaping?
Yeah. So this 1% drop represents roughly how many square feet of landscape area?
Didn't know we were going to make everybody do math today, did we?
Just, it looks, just under 400 square feet, it looks like.
Yeah, okay, great. Thanks. Any considerations to dark sky and lighting the parking and building?
Yeah, so the majority of the lighting is going to be wall-mounted along the exterior of the building. So there wouldn't be any direct lighting to above and there wouldn't be any like lamp or post lighting. We were trying to make sure that we take that into consideration and not overlight or overlight, pollute the area in the building. So we've been very selective about the energy efficient fixtures that are going to be on the exterior of the building, making sure that it meets the foot candles that are required for like highlighting and illuminating the pathways, but not doing it to any excess.
Do you have any, do you have any low-level lighting for the pathways at them? I mean, typically wall packs are pretty horrible on light.
We do have some near, I believe, the front entry area, kind of that, that kind of marks that from the sidewalk to the entry of the building. But that's only kind of in that kind of east side, front pedestrian area.
Any additional questions, particularly as they surround any of the waivers? Is anybody on?
Yeah, just with regards to parking, that, how many EV spaces are there? And are they fully EV, EV-ready? What's the?
So there are four. I think one of which would be EV-ready at the completion of the building. And then the three other spaces would be EV.
It's actually the other word, EV-ready is the, the ones that are not fully energized. You're talking about one is going to be energized, right?
One will be energized and three will be energized like capable.
Okay.
Right.
And how's that as a ratio? I mean, that sounds like a high ratio for 14 spaces.
It is, yeah. So one, one EV installed, one EV-ready, two EV-capable spaces. That's in line with our recently adopted, you know, we recently came in line with the state model ordinance, but that, that meets that standard. Yeah.
Okay. So we didn't compromise on the EV requirement, just the parking? Okay. Thanks.
Additional questions of the applicant? Seeing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll now open it up for public comment. Do we have anybody online at this point?
There's one person.
We have one person. Is there any hand raised? Is that hand raised? No? Okay, great. Thanks. All right then. Seeing nobody who wants to comment. Do you have any closing statement you'd like to make?
Just that, you know, we're normally do very large commercial buildings and we had an opportunity to kind of dive into this world of kind of light, medium industrial, you know, construction, utilizing the tilt-up. But we wanted to do something that was, you know, not just a gray shell that's thrown up, but something that has some design intent. And that's something that's reflective of the area and that is a bit more progressive when you think of warehouse. So we're hoping that this kind of does that, especially with how much we've worked with the landscape architect to make sure that we maximize as much as possible that footprint so that it's both a combination of kind of that articulation with the building and then that vegetative sense that kind of surrounds it. So we've really enjoyed working on this project and we're hoping that, you know, it can be something that future developments within the CTC can refer to. So we're definitely wanting to make sure that we hit those high marks and standards.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
And do we have a staff closing statement?
We don't.
Nothing additional. All right. Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and the planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented. During deliberations, no further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. Could I ask you to pull up the, the?
The, the list of waivers?
We've got two, two slides with the waivers.
Great, yeah, thanks. So maybe as a commission, if anybody wants to address any of these otherwise?
Yeah, these, I will just say that these, these waivers that are identified here are the ones that I don't have any issue with and I think are purely demonstrative of the limitations of the site and the proposed building. So I don't have any issues with these waivers.
Cool. And I, I think I agree with you at that point as well. They're, they're kind of, some of these older standards and we're just kind of comparing it to that. And I feel like kind of increasing the density, the use of the site is highest best used. So I can appreciate that. All right. How about next page? Any thoughts on here?
I guess I'm kind of at a similar point at that too, is, well, let's, it's, it's not going to be any prime habitat. I, I think going Zurich makes, increases the quality of potential habitat out there as opposed to turf grass and the required pesticides, herbicides, fertilizers that, to maintain that suburban industrial look and feel. So I, I'm encouraged by that. Curious what other people think though.
That's a, I, I completely agree. And, you know, 1% reduction in landscape cover, I would, I would say this is a high quality of, of landscape cover. So I'm, I, I think that's fair. It's a good trade for Louisville. And, you know, same with the tree, with trees versus shrubs. I mean, there, there's certainly vegetation here and they do a good job in the design of, of using that to separate things. Setbacks, I think they did a good job. I'm less worried about the really small one because it, it goes up to the easement for the, the rail. But yeah, I, I'm, I'm curious to hear what others think, but I, I think they did a good job with landscaping is really the, the crux of my comment here.
Great. Yeah, I'm totally fine with the setback. Any other?
Yeah. I don't know. I have, I have a little bit more difficulty with these ones just from the not hard and fast interpretation of exactly what the requirements are. But these ones seem slightly more arbitrary to me, just based on the fact that there is no programmatic definition for the building size as it stands, that it's just more of a spec based on, you know,
Spec.
past use and, right.
Yeah.
Where, you know, to, to Planner Post's comment about maybe 400 square feet more of non, you know, hardscaped or built area gets you that, that percentage, right? A percentage is a percentage, but maybe five percentage or six percent or seven percent. Like where's the threshold, right? And it, and it, to me, it's just a little bit harder to, to be comfortable with the idea that without a programmatic definition for the space, 400 more square feet of built environment triggers, you know, four more waivers or not, not having done the math, right? It might be two more waivers or three more waivers. And I'm not saying that, especially in an instance or application like this in CTC for a light industrial building, that this is going to be, you know, the showcase project that highlights why we've really failed on, on some of the requirements. But it's just a little bit harder for me to accept these ones on, on face compared to some of the other ones that are a little bit more difficult to comply with, like the parking space size or, or, or things like that, right? So that's just.
No, and I, I appreciate your concern for the trade-offs of why, right? It's being built on spec and could they shave that off? That said though, back to my thought though on what's the highest best use of the space out there? And if, if we're looking at it from an economic perspective, then potentially, and, and I guess too, when I look at most of these requests, they're pretty small for the most part, right? So they don't make me feel like, hey, you know, we're letting a lot out, you know, letting a lot kind of go away with it. So.
I, I agree with you. And, yeah, I mean, just to play the devil's advocate, right? No matter how flat the pancake, there are always two sides. So it's, you know, why not two more trees, you know?
Right, yeah.
Or, if it's that small of a thing, why isn't it, you know, it, it just, it seems like an arbitrary hurdle that's, that the statement is that it's just kind of too hard to get above.
Yeah, the trees one is a funny one. I'm with you there. What are the other thoughts?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna say, we could demand two more trees. I'm sure we could squeeze them in somewhere, but let's not obsess about that. And I think the fact that the west is the rail line, probably, I, I'm more comfortable with it because of that. But, you, you can rationalize this every which way.
Yeah. And, and so that, you know, that is the largest variance, like two and a half feet versus 10. But I, I would argue that we're trying to maximize parking spaces. And if you allow that, that's a better egress for, for that last parking space. So, you know, I, I would rather have that be usable space for parking than it would be for, you know, having a less egregious waiver against a, you know, the 10-foot setback that's against the rail line. So I, I think that's, I think that's okay.
Great. Commissioners Moline or Basket, any thoughts you want to chime in on? All good?
I put my hand up.
Great, all right.
So I'm generally comfortable with this. I've gotten to spend a little bit of time in the CTC and observe the combinations of buildings that are there. So this will be a nicer building than a lot of the buildings that are there. And I think it fits the space. Just shoehorns it in there, but that's how big the lot is. So I'm comfortable with the variances that have been requested.
Great, thanks.
And, and I don't have, I'll just say, I don't have much to add. I've appreciated your, the discussion that you've had and that we've had about the waivers and variances. And I'm also at the point where I'm comfortable with the requests.
All right, yes.
Yeah, I, I would just add on to Commissioner Basket's comment that, yeah, the, the aesthetics, I do commend you for something that's better than, better than average. So yes, thanks for making the effort on that.
Thank you. Any additional? Yes?
Yeah, if we're moving off the waiver discussion, I, I guess the, the one concern I did come in with, I still have, but has been eased a bit, you know, was the case I asked the question about, you know, building off of Commissioner Moline's question about if the use case of the interior changes and they renovate, sounds like that would trigger a staff review. Except, you know, if we, you know, it, it sounds like based on the experience of the builder and staff, that the parking ratio is acceptable, so we can go with it. But if there was a change, that would be my concern. But from what I'm hearing, it sounds like there would need to be a review for a use case renovation type, type down the line.
And that would be the case for any building out there, but in this case, they're parked slim to start with.
Yeah.
Right. So that's where it would potentially be a future issue in particular. But, anything additional? No?
No, not really.
Okay, all right.
I agree with what everyone's saying, in, in particular, that the context of where this building is is important and how it fits into the other uses. I think staff did, I mean, I think more persuasive in, in providing that context and looking into that. So.
Last call and deliberations. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 4 Series 2025 for an approval planned, planned unit development at 517 South Arthur Avenue.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Great. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Haley.
Yes.
Commissioner Bangs.
Yes.
Commissioner Choi.
Yes.
Commissioner Hunt.
Yes.
Commissioner Basket.
Yes.
Commissioner Moline.
Yes.
Chair Brown Eyes.
Yes. Thank you very much. Next stop is City Council. Certainly, thank you. All right. Um, let's see, 7:20. Why don't we take a five-minute break?
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Thank you. We'll now reconvene. I'll now open the public hearing on a request for a planned unit development for 380 South Taylor Avenue. The purpose of the hearing is to request, receive evidence regarding the application materials and provide a public forum for all interested parties who wish to comment on this request before the planning commission. The procedure for the public hearing will be as follows. First, there will be a presentation and testimony by city staff, followed by questions from the planning commission to staff. Next, we'll have a presentation and testimony by the applicant, followed by questions from the planning commission to the applicant. After these two presentations, members of the public who have joined this meeting in person, by computer, or telephone, may speak regarding the application. Anyone who would like to speak in person is asked to complete a speaker card, use the raise hand function if participating by computer, or star nine if calling in by telephone. Please limit your comments to three minutes per person. Two people present at the meeting may pool their minutes to allow one person to speak for up to a total of six minutes. The purpose of public comment is receive public testimony and not a forum for debate or dialogue. Commenters are encouraged to raise pertinent issues and may ask questions for clarity. However, these questions will not be directly answered during the public comment period. The applicant staff will then be allowed to make a closing statement. I will then close the public hearing and no further testimony or other evidence will be received unless the commission decides to reopen the hearing. The planning commission will discuss the matter and may approve, approve with conditions, table, deny, or continue to a future meeting. Public hearings are recorded for the public record. All testimony must be presented after stating your full name and address. Does anyone participating in this hearing object to the procedure I've described? Seeing none. Do we have notification?
Notice has been satisfied.
Thank you. Do we have any disclosures from planning commission? Seeing none. Mr. Post.
Great, thank you. Right, we're having some technical difficulties this evening, so give me just a minute here.
Sure, go ahead, yep.
Apologize, we're forced to use ClickShare tonight, and it's not, not picking up my, I got it last time, but apparently it's not coming this time around. See if we can get it to work now. Okay, I am going to do this a little bit differently, if that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, take your time. If you want to try something again, that's fine, too, or I think the main thing is so that we can see the presentation going out.
You have the slides, but you aren't able to share them?
Yeah, let me share.
Is it a sharing issue?
So let's me do this, then it shares mine. And interestingly enough, I was able to do this on. Got it. I apologize for that. Our normal way of sharing isn't working tonight, so I happened to use the ClickShare, and I've, I've never done that in council chambers before, so I apologize for that. Okay, good evening. Again, Commissioners Matt Post, Planner, Community Development Team. The item before you tonight for consideration is Resolution Five, Series 2025, recommending approval of a PUD amendment to allow the construction of two industrial buildings and associated site improvements at 380 Taylor Avenue, or 380 South Taylor Avenue, as is commonly referred to in our system as 380 Taylor at the moment. Starting with a bit of background here, again, we're looking at a property in the CTC. This property is vacant, as well as the last one. 1.2 acres in size, so a little bit larger than the last one. More in line from a size perspective, but I think, which is generally what we see in this, in this particular part of the CTC. So 1.2 acres, just over 53,000 square feet in size. The property is bound on the east and the north by existing industrial development, and bound on the west and the south by South Taylor Avenue or Taylor Avenue and Cherry Street, respectively. This property was also subdivided as part of the Colorado Technological Center plat filing one in 1979. The property is subject to an existing PUD, which was approved in 2001. It was intended to be built out with the building and property to the north. That never happened. As part of that phase, there are two separate properties, so this property has, has been vacant. Wasn't able to find any history of permits on this particular property. So moving into the proposal here, site plan is, is depicted on this slide. The development includes two industrial buildings. The building to the south is 7,150 square feet in size, and the building to the north is 7,000 square feet in size, resulting in a total building footprint for the site of 14,150 square feet. Water quality and detention are provided on the east side of the site between the building and the property boundary. Parking is internal with that fire-required hammerhead turnaround extending through the site. Two, two plaza spaces are included. The main entrances to both buildings are at those corners directly adjacent to South Taylor Avenue, although they do face internally. There are some storefront systems there and some additional entry features that identify those as main entrances. 26 vehicle parking spaces are provided on this particular site, including four vehicles parking spaces, and this project is in compliance, this proposal is in compliance with our EV standards as adopted. Moving into the proposal here, so the buildings are proposed to be constructed using architectural metal panels that would feature varying texture and color. There are two, two different ribbed panel, two different ribbed metal panel features here in two colors. Both buildings incorporate variations in roof form and pitch. With, again, the discussed building entries, you can see the, the top elevation would be the south elevation of the south building adjacent to Cherry Street. That middle elevation would be an oblique view of that south building. You can see the main entrance and then some additional fenestration or transparency on what is the west elevation. And then the, this, the, the bottom graphic there is the north building that would be proposed on site. The south building varies in height from almost 16 feet to just over 25 feet, while the north building is just over 23 feet tall. As part of this application, the applicant is requesting a waiver from the Industrial Design Guidelines, which prohibit the use of metal as a primary facade material. The applicant's also requesting a waiver from the Design Guidelines requiring varying building setbacks when a multi-building development proposal comes in front of us. We'll discuss those waivers in more detail. The applicant's provided some, some renderings here of their building. That top rendering, again, would be the south building as viewed from the west. The middle rendering would be the site as viewed directly from the west, from Taylor Avenue. And that bottom rendering is the north building, which would be viewed from essentially a southwest view, again, from Taylor Avenue. Regarding landscaping, 35.2% of this site is proposed to be landscaped, while, as you know, 25% is required by the industrial guidelines. A waiver has been requested for street tree plantings, however. This site is heavily encumbered by easements on the south side and some easements and utilities on the west side of the site as well. We'll, we'll discuss that in later slides. With, with the requested waiver, the applicant is still proposing 37 total trees on the site in addition to preserving, preserving two mature cottonwoods that are at the southwest corner of the site there. Or, sorry, southeast corner. 151 low-water shrubs are proposed, while a low-water grass seed mix is included in the easement areas on the south side and some on, on the west side as well. So again, no traditional turf as part of this particular proposal. Formal analysis of conformance of this PUD is, again, in your, in your staff reports and packets. We'll go ahead and go over some of the initial waiver requests here. There are four waiver requests with this particular proposal. The first waiver request is for relief from the industrial design standard that mandates varying setbacks for developments that include multiple buildings within the industrial zone district. This specifically applies to the west side of the site and, and Taylor Avenue. The applicant has proposed both buildings to be set back the minimum, which is 30 feet. The 30-foot setback applies to both Taylor Avenue and Cherry Street, although Taylor would be the primary frontage. Cherry, the non-primary or side-street frontage, the 30-foot setback applies because those are both considered local streets. The applicants made this request based on the corner lot configuration, and again, what was just described as the two 30-foot setback requirements on both the south side and the west side of the site. The, the overall building frontage on Taylor Street for both buildings is right around 40 feet. So this particular proposal would amount to 80 feet of total building frontage on a, on a lot frontage of total building on the Taylor Avenue frontage that's just about 198 feet long in total. So staff find that, based on the lot configuration being a corner lot in this particular scenario, and the existing easements on the south side, and then again, the requirement for detention here, including the fact that 32% of the site is landscaped, we support the request for waiver from the varying building setbacks in this particular scenario on the West Taylor Avenue frontage. The second waiver request is specifically to allow the use of metal as an exterior cladding material. The Industrial Design Guidelines explicitly state that metal as an exterior material may only be used as an accent material, so not as a full building facade. So the applicant, again, has proposed two different ribbed profiles in two colors. So after further review on this particular item, staff have concluded, and there's, this has been an application before me as well, that the metal cladding materials have become increasingly architecturally appropriate, considered durable and sustainable option. I'm sorry, durable option, and additionally, they provide fire resistance and they're easily maintained. We're seeing the metal pop-up as a more practical choice when done appropriately. Further, the city has permitted architectural metal cladding on two other buildings in the CTC, actually, just east of this site, specifically what is now operating as John's Table and the Climbing Gym, the spot. So again, based on the fact that the adjacent sites have successfully incorporated metal cladding into their facade design and the widespread use at this point of metal cladding, staff find the request in this particular case to be reasonable as presented. Third waiver request is for relief from the design standards that require one street tree for every 40 linear feet. As you see from the graphic on the screen, the property is significantly encumbered by easements on the south side. What you see in red on this screen is a, is a 20-foot Goodhue ditch easement that strictly prohibits any improvements whatsoever. They don't even allow woody tree materials in there or any woody planting materials. Those two cottonwoods are naturally occurring in, in that easement, so again, the applicant is retaining those. In addition to that easement that is restrictive from a development perspective and a landscaping perspective, the green lines are representative of existing utilities on that Cherry Street frontage. If you, if you look closely at the plans, you'll actually see a bank of mechanical equipment or a grouping of mechanical equipment and transformers. That, those transformers are actually the start of a significant number of underground utility laterals that run west from that site. If you look at the site as an aerial, just east of this site, there are street trees right there. Again, that would be because these underground utility lines start at those transformer boxes and run west. So this site is uniquely encumbered by those utilities and specifically that easement that, that runs. Okay. Okay. All right, back to it. The fourth and final waiver request is another one for the reduction of, you know, the two-way drive aisle width, which, again, we've talked about is common here. Industrial Design Guidelines require the 28-foot two-way drive aisle width. This particular request is for a reduction to 26 feet. Again, standard Lewisville Fire Protection District actually requires a minimum 26 foot for aerial apparatus access. This particular site doesn't require aerial apparatus access, but the applicant has chose to maintain that 26-foot width. Staff have no objections to this waiver request. Staff have no objections to this waiver request. And so as mentioned in the previous case, we reviewed this for compliance with PUD criteria, 1728-120 in the LMC of the Louisville Municipal Code and compliance with the industrial design standards and staff have found this application to be compliant with the granted waivers for metal cladding, street trees, the multi-building setback on the Taylor Avenue side and then the drive aisle width waiver as well. And so with that, staff will recommend approval of this particular application with the condition that's not in your staff packets. So we had some discussions with the applicant about the feasibility and challenges of developing two buildings at once and really how our process works post entitlement process specifically from a building permit issuance perspective, certificate of occupancy perspective and certificate of completions perspective. And so after just some further discussion with the applicant, we recommend approval of Resolution 5 Series 2025 recommending approval to the Planning Commission of a planned unit development amendment to allow the construction of two industrial buildings and associated site improvements with the following condition. We are recommending that this condition be added as a note to the site plan and states the details of this planned unit development shall be fully implemented in a single phase. That would be a single development phase. A core and shell certificate of completion shall be issued for one building on site prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the other building on site. And so with that happy to answer any questions and specifically any questions about the condition that we recommend be added.
Can I just, two questions. One is on this, on this, just make sure I understand what that means because I'm a little new to this, but does that mean then that they can't, they can't get a certificate of occupancy for a finished building until both buildings are basically done?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, so the certificate of completion is required prior to a certificate of occupancy. We issue that for core and shell completion. That means the exterior portion of the building is substantially completed. The CO or certificate of occupancy would be issued post certificate of completion and post interior tenant finish improvements. So this is simply a method to ensure that both buildings on site are substantially completed, including all site improvements as they are presented on the PUD. That would be landscaping, trash enclosures, parking, EV chargers, everything on the PUD.
And was that added out of concern that they might lose steam or somehow not complete the second building or?
Yeah, there was, I think we had some discussions with the applicant in that just how the process works with two buildings. And so generally, I would say that it would be staff's desire when we have multiple buildings on a site that are not part of a subdivision and are on one particular lot that are all part of one PUD, that we see a phased plan with that to ensure that in the event that only one of those buildings is built, the site can stand alone without the second building being built. And so it's, I would say it's not uncommon for us to apply a condition like this. If you look at past PUDs, again, multi-building sites, we've had similar concurrency notes and/or certificate of completion and certificate of occupancy standards on there. Again, just to ensure the building is substantially completed. I did give the applicant the opportunity to submit a phased plan with this and again that phased plan would have been a phase one, a phase two. We would have reviewed phase one to determine that that site could stand on its own in the event that phase two was not built out. It also gives the applicant additional flexibility, right, that where we could simply administratively extend the PUD because we have phasing plans that have been previously approved and the event that we don't have phasing plans previously approved. We thought this the next best solution. I will say it's also, it also gives the applicant additional flexibility because we would, our building department would actually require a certificate of occupancy for both buildings as with planning, right? So when we're finaling, what we call finaling a site, we'll go out to a site and we'll inspect it for final certificate of occupancy. We'll look to ensure that everything is completed and planning would require that both buildings are fully completed before a CO is issued to either building and both buildings would have to get a CO at the same time. This actually gives the applicant some flexibility where they can substantially complete one building, receive a certificate of completion and then move into their primary building or their primary operational building with the CO and begin generating revenue before they finish out the second building.
So does that mean conceivably that there could be two structures? One may have a CO, the other may be unfinished and have no CO?
Correct. It would be unfinished on the interior at that point. They could not use the interior until they receive a tenant finish permit and a CO.
Okay.
From an exterior perspective, you wouldn't know. You'd have to go inside.
Okay, but minimally there will be two structures that appear complete from the exterior.
Right.
Okay.
Then the only other question I had, just out of curiosity, why do the design standards, why do they preclude the metal cladding in the first place?
That's an interesting question. I, I, I'd probably, you all may have some insight on this. I'd have to go back to the early 2000s or late 90s when the standards were initially drafted. I would have to say that just based on my knowledge of building materials, I don't believe that there was a wide variety of metal cladding materials available at the time, right? So when you think of medical, metal, yeah, and Steve, correct me if I'm wrong. Sure. Right. Right. Right.
I mean, I guess my question is, are the materials, are there steel and different kinds of metal materials sort of aesthetically different now than they would have been when this standard was put in place?
We, just, just a quick point. We can't hear Steve. I can't anyway. I don't know if Deborah can.
He didn't have his, he doesn't have his mic on.
Thanks, Steve. Yeah. Using two different types of panels makes it look a little bit different also and that historically, right, you'd just put it up, a wall of steel and it was fast and less expensive. At the time and while you see some of this out there with the concrete tilt up and that's why the earlier application this evening was quite a bit different because it has more variation to it. So what you saw out there, which exists now, is really plain concrete tilt-up flat walls. So, yeah, I'm surprised actually. So was there much discussion internally regarding this waiver in particular?
Yeah, we did, yeah, there was quite a bit of discussion and there was quite a bit of discussion with the applicant as well about the metal exterior here. And again, I think what we saw was prior staff have supported metal buildings that are, that are actually just, just down the way from this total.
Actually, Commissioner Mullin, I'm curious to see if you remember when we approved what's now the Spot Climbing Gym and what's now John's Table Restaurant adjacent, that was one project. I don't think those were ever approved as 100% metal.
We can, I do have a slide or that has a street view of it if we want to look at the slide real quick. It might be, it might be beneficial just to see what has been previously.
I'd like to see that.
Yeah, no.
Let me, let me share that.
Yeah. And I'll just interject that unfortunately I don't recall that, Chair Braunice.
Yeah, I mean, that would have been the first one in decades at that point, so, right.
Yeah, so on the, on the north is the spot. You can see you got full, full facades.
If you look at the back part there, I don't think the back, that wedge that builds up maybe is steel necessarily, or maybe it is, it's just a different color.
It's, 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 it's a different color, yeah, but it's a corrugated.
Right.
It's a corrugated, I'm not, so not a corrugated, a ribbed product, not corrugated but ribbed, yeah.
So is my interpretation that the, that the proposed building is similar in sheet metal design as the spot? It looked like it from the renderings, but yeah, I'll let the applicant speak to that, but yeah, it would be ribbed metal exterior panel application, yeah.
And was it, was it a consideration that they had, so the varying roof heights and the different elevations to sort of break it up aesthetically?
Yeah, we did. We went through multiple iterations of the elevations, requesting additional transparency, some articulation in the facade on the south side, more, ask for additional entry features to highlight some of those entry features that were there and then again, some of that variation in overall roof height. So that was part of the, the review process here that we tried to work through to get to the point that we are tonight.
So it ends up being less of a box than what we're seeing up there, less of a metal box?
Well, I will go to, yeah, let's, I'll go to one of the elevations.
Very different look and feel.
So these would be, yeah, the color elevations presented. Well, there's, I'm sorry, three, two color elevations here, two grayscale elevations. But again, yeah, variation in roof height and then some additional transparency.
I have one, one additional question if that's okay?
Please.
And as usual, this might be a question for the applicant as well, but I'm curious if there's still an owners association and whether or not lot builders out there have to get architectural approval of, of all the buildings that are out there from that owners association?
So Commissioner Mullin, I'm seeing some nodding heads when we have the applicant up, I'm sure.
Okay.
Be happy to speak to it.
Great, thank you.
We also, Commissioner Mullin, we as a staff refer every CTC project to the owners association for review as well.
Additional questions? Yes, Commissioner Mullin?
So is the, I think, in terms of the aesthetic, I think I would feel better, but I feel differently about it if it was one tone versus two tone. So, and my understanding is color isn't a part of the approval. So is there anything that actually holds it to like the two-tone metal application or could they come back and just build a one tone later?
So I, well, we would, for the, this would be part of the CO process, right? I kind of discussed, we would, they have, it has to match what they've presented to us on the PUD here, so it'd have to be a two-tone. I believe there's, there's also two different ribbed profiles that are part of the PUD packet there. So the lower portion is one profile, the upper portion, they're, they're both substantially vertical, but they're, they're different widths on the ribs. So they would be, we would, they would have to be multicolored. We would look at the elevations before we issue a CO or a certificate of completion, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. One of the waivers is the varying setbacks. So I just need to be educated that it would mean the requirement is to vary the setback of the two buildings.
Exactly.
And so they're asking to have them essentially in line.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, good, thanks.
And there's no requirement on footage percentage?
No, not, not in the industrial district, no, yeah.
Great, thanks. Any additional questions particularly as they relate to the waivers? Seeing none, I'd like to welcome the applicant up. Yes, wonderful. Yeah, let's not pass those ones around, but I appreciate, I appreciate the size. It's actually much more illustrative. So Commissioners Mullin and Basket, you are missing out right now. You'll be able to see it once we get to a podium shot of a couple of large, three-foot by 20 inches, 22 inches, three feet by 20 inches, 18 inches, sample sizes. There we go. Yes, thank you. Picture is worth all my words.
Your full-size samples.
Right, yes.
They're with me, we're trying to get the other one up here.
Well, members of the commission, thank you for all.
Actually, let's wait, yeah, we have to get you in front of the microphone. So that it goes on the audio feed out.
Well, it's this, it's not, it's this right here, yeah.
Does that device ever have to be recharged?
No, it doesn't.
Oh, okay.
But we are running low on our computer battery unfortunately because it has to go in this, they go on the same, same input. Ben, you don't have to give me access to share right now, right? Are you?
Can we leave that one right there?
That was it, yep, and then you can control.
Am I in the PowerPoint now? I can do without it. If you can just leave me, this will be fine. Thank you, ma'am. Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, my name is Don Russell. I'm the architect for this project. I have also together with me this evening, Mr. Dmitri Kalcik, who is the owner and general contractor of the project. I just have a few comments. I brought some full-size actual color samples. The gray sample is the lower, or if you will, using a historic architectural term, the wainscot of the building and also the emphasis on the spandrels above the windows. And I'd like to just talk, I'll, I'll kind of come over here if you can still, can you still hear me okay?
So we need it to be on the microphone for the sake of the audio to cable TV and?
I'll do the best I can. I just would like to talk about the overall concept of this project and how we've treated the articulation of the two buildings. And so I have this streetscape, which is the middle, middle rendering here, looking kind of down between the two buildings because you can't consider it just one building and just the other building. It has to be considered as the overall whole project and how the whole project looks together, how everything kind of complements everything else. The emphasis and the design of the two buildings has to do with how everything is placed on the site. We have a tremendously confining site. We have the ditch on the south side, which takes a tremendous part of the site. We have the whole west side in the utility setback and off of Taylor Avenue is full of utilities. We've got cable, we've got fiber optic, we've got telephone, we've got electrical. Just as, as I was getting involved with this project, Excel has come along and put another transformer cabinet just a little bit to the south of the ones that have been there probably since the CTC was built. So all things together, we have to consider, I considered as the architect for the project, how everything relates not only to the community, the surrounding community at large, but relates to one another on the site, within the site, and both buildings need to be considered together so that they kind of are a homogeneous composition. The building design concept was evolved, focused everything to the internal part of the site and not out to the streets. We have, we have obviously our main access off of Taylor Avenue, but the main, main philosophical approach that we took in developing this site was to focus towards the inside and kind of use the perimeter of the site to kind of shield all the utilities and the parking and the driving driveway and, and everything that occurs on the inside, loading, overhead doors, one thing or another. The over, the offset roof, offset roof designs are kind of, come from me. Was born here in Colorado and actually brought up in, in the mining communities in the mountains. And, and I've always been very partial to the sloping roofs. I know sloping roofs have become so, ever so popular, but they really are a big part of my history as a Coloradan and my family's history in Colorado. of my history as a Coloradan and my family's history in Colorado. The offsetting colors is, is, just to conclude here, my discussion and invite questions from the commissioners, we felt that this building should not jump out at you. I make reference in my narrative on the PUD submittal that I have a great deal of respect for the site. This is an important site at the intersection of Taylor and Cherry. It's a very important site, a lot of, a lot of traffic. Everybody to that end basically goes by it one way, either going east or west or north and south. Was profoundly influenced in this neighborhood by the special, I call it the specialized building. I believe it was originally built, it's, it's up to the north of us where Taylor curves around. It was built by Pearl Azumi, I believe, when Pearl Azumi owned it, and then they leased it for a number of, of years to the Specialized Corporation. And I don't know who's in there now, the Pro's Closet or some other people. I think it's a very nice building for being a metal building. The evolution of metal, I call it cladding. I don't call it siding. I call it cladding, is, is quite articulated and very distinctive now. And probably for about the last five years have been really, the industry has really developed some substantial design profiles that really speak to the uniqueness of the material. It's, it's non-combustible, it wears quite well, and, and I think it lends a lighter feeling to the architecture than masonry or tilt-up precast or precast concrete.
Great. Thank you very much. Open it up for Commissioner, questions of the applicant?
Oh.
Oh, did you?
Mr. Kalchik, would you care to come up? Mr. Kalchik is going to occupy the south building. He's not in absentia, and he's moving his building, he's moving his business from Denver to Louisville.
Good evening. We own Set and Stone. We're a slab fabrication company. We're in Littleton. Been there for many years. We've been renting and it's been great, but we happened to find a lot here in Louisville that we liked, and we believe that we could fit well within the community. We offer remodeling services as well as lines of cabinets and tile work and just beyond slabs. We are planning to occupy the south building for our primary use with potentially, you know, leasing out the north, north building as well as possibly down the road, maybe even importing material as part of the growth of our business. But that is going to be the primary use of the building within the community.
Good. Thank you.
Further questions from the commissioners?
I had one question on the metal cladding that you've provided.
Yes, sir.
In terms of, what are the durable finishes that are applied to the metal?
We have several, we haven't chosen a final finish yet, but probably Kynar, which is a machine-applied, baked-on finish essentially. I'm sure that your question arises from concerns about fading over the years, and they have really, really, the industry has really improved that characteristic. But looking at Kynar presently.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, that was the question about durability and repairability where the baked-on enamels are easier to repair than a powder coat or anything.
And being dust blasted and all kinds of other, other things that could happen to the building.
Actually, can we ask you to get by the microphone again? Thanks. No, if you can be in front of the microphone when you're replying.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've, we've got two commissioners who are.
History, history tells me that I probably talked too loudly, but I apologize, sir.
No, great. Thanks. That's perfect. Thank you. Additional questions for the applicant? If I could ask somebody, can we put up the, the waivers requested on screen or is that going to be a mildly monumentable technological?
We'll see. We'll see what we can do.
Can I ask you questions? Are these the actual colors you're proposing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks.
As we work on that, do we have anything that comes to mind that people wanted to?
What's the, the roof material is going to be similar?
Same, same stuff, but a standing seam, two-inch rib, standing seam roof. White.
Questions regarding circulation, parking allowances, setbacks? There we go.
I have no questions.
Okay. Thanks. All right. All right then. Last chance. None. Okay. Thank you. I will now open it up for public comment. Nope. All right. Seeing none. In closing, would you like to state anything about the project? Any, any closing statement, final statement that you?
Can I get my, can I get my elevations back that we just had?
We're going to need these again.
You need this? Oh, all right.
For our discussions, but.
We've tried really hard, I believe, to have this project fit into the community of the CTC, who by the way has approved the project. Actually, they approved it the end of last year, as I recall. Their architectural control committee, as I call them. I think we've made an excellent use of the site. We have an excellent landscape plan done by a local city, town, city of Louisville, landscape architect, Carla Dakin of Dakin Design, Kay Dakin Design, been around for a number of years. And I think that it's going to look really great when all the landscaping matures.
Right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And a staff response or closing statement?
No closing statement on this one either.
All right. Great. Thank you. Then as we jump into deliberations, so I'll now close the public hearing. Planning commissioners will deliberate on the evidence presented during deliberations. No further public comment or other testimony or evidence will be received. I would just begin that it is a, it is a big departure to go with a steel building from what has been permitted out there in the past, and maybe we're ready for it. Maybe the future is now. And these products have come quite a ways, along with the architectural detail that's represented with some eyebrows over windows and other, the sloping roofs, that it's not your, what used to be a typical steel building warehouse. So with that though, curious what other people are thinking?
I, I agree with you. I, I think, you know, harkening back to the, the, maybe the precedent for some of the design requirements or limitations previously and, you know, referencing the Pearl Building, I think there was maybe an overuse of Corten for a certain amount of time. And I, I do appreciate the, the finished elements of, of the building, of the proposed buildings. I do think that it provides a little bit of that depth of, of appearance and variation that I, that I generally support. I also think that the, the activation of the whole site with the different buildings and the varying profiles achieves some of the objectives like the varying setbacks for multi-b buildings, especially since there is no real definition of what that varying setback needed to be.
Right.
So I, I think the, the planned approach to providing that aesthetic variation achieves the intent. Pulling on that a little bit more, I think that, again, limitations of the site with the easements that are on the bottom or the south edge limit the ability to comply with the strict letter of the requirements. But the applicant, I feel, has done a good job of meeting and exceeding the intent of requirement by going above and beyond, got those two trees. So, you know, I, I think generally, I, I appreciate what the applicant has done with the proposed design, and I think that it will fit in well and provide a little bit of variance to the whole CTC area with some metal clad buildings thrown in with all of the concrete tilt-up.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Just no thoughts, Commissioner Moline?
Yeah, I, I completely agree with Commissioner Shaw. I think that's an eloquent summary of how I was thinking, like, the variation of the design meets the intent for a lot of the requirements that we're waiving. I think the design's great. I think in particular that the two-tone, two-different style column metal sheeting, I think, mitigates some of the perhaps previous concerns about metal siding. It's, I don't, I don't think it's going to look like a giant shipping container. I think they did a good job of avoiding that. So, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm happy and comfortable with this.
Great. Commissioners Moline or Basket? How are you feeling about the whole proposal?
I feel, I think it's a good use for, and as it was noted, an important site that has two sides of lots of traffic going by. I like the design, the way the buildings are looking internally and the site is focused internally, but I think that the relief of the roof designs make it, will make it fit into the CTC in general to add some architectural variety.
Great. Thank you.
And, and I would just add, I, I appreciated the elevation and the applicant's discussion about having the two buildings, the slanted roof. I think that sort of from Taylor, that's, that is an interesting look and it, it does, and I appreciate that, and I, it does look like it has more interest on the interior. I guess at some point, I, I think having a, a nice exterior presentation to Cherry would be, would be fine as well. I'll just say that, but I'm going to be in support of this.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Additional deliberations?
I, I agree with pretty much what everybody's been saying. I think this is a nice, you know, architecture. I appreciate the effort in the architecture. I appreciate the, maybe improvements in building materials and, you know, we've been seeing a lot of, with all the rebuilds and the fences, we've seen more metal lately, and I think there, there's reasons for that, that I appreciate, that I appreciate in particular. And so, you know, I like this and I think it'll be, it'll fit in well.
Great. Thank you. Any additional thoughts?
Nope, nothing to add. I think it's, it's well presented.
Wonderful. All right. With that then, I entertain a motion. I also find myself in support of it at this time. I appreciate the architecture, I appreciate the architectural detail within the site. A motion to approve Resolution Five, 2025, planned unit development for 380 South Taylor Avenue?
I'll move, I'll move to approve Resolution Number Five.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Krishna Mahaly.
Yes.
Krishna Bangs.
Yes.
Krishna Choi.
Yes.
Krishna Hunt.
Yes.
Krishna Basket.
Yes.
Krishna Moline.
Yes.
Chair Braunice.
Yes. Motion carries. Might also plant the thought of voluntary compliance with dark sky goals. Not a requirement. Thank you very much. Next up is City Council for you all. Thank you. All right. With that then, we will open it up for any planning commission comments. Does anybody want to have anything? Any bake sales coming up? Baseball, baseball's always raising money, right? Yeah.
I'll say it again next month, but just a reminder, I will not be here during the June meeting.
Okay. Great. Thanks.
Yeah, I think I read that you're not planning a second April meeting, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Yep, yep.
No problem. Thank you. And I do look forward to a discussion of minimum parking requirements. Right time for it. Any staff comments? Nope. All right then. Motion adjourned.
So moved.
And seconded.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.